Yeah.
You know, it's like.
Welcome everyone to the planning board meeting. It's January twenty fifth, two thousand twenty three, seven oh two P M. Please stand. We're not budget review.
Budget regions.
United States of America and to the Republic, we can stand on nation under God in this world. And the rest is wrong.
So our only agenda tonight is the Evergreen Estates. Our engineer from Cedarwood is going to be want to present your report.
Yeah. Maybe we start with that first or?
I think that's basically who we're here for, yeah.
Okay.
So even though it's a little wordy, I won't read the whole thing. It's basically, we just listed reviewing against the town code for what we saw. I've been in communication with our engineer Eric over here and basically they're submitting the, from our understanding, the preliminary plan is, this was previously approved with the revised changes to the roadway. So as far as the grading and everything else goes, we just had a few comments. So in their cover letter, they stated the variances are going after. We didn't see anything, any issue with their plan to tie into the intersection. That's comment one A. One B, the other comment we saw regarding the variance was there is a minimum roadway grade less than one percent for a minor local road. Within the code, it allows the town to move forward with approving something with less than a one percent slope. As long as there's provisions for approved stormwater drainage facilities, which they are going to be moving forward with their design. So it's not finalized the engineering yet, correct me if I'm wrong on the plans. So it'll be something moving forward and they'll have to comply with. Depending on the regulations would be the D C general permit there with their stormwater pollution prevention plan and post-construction controls. So that'll be handled moving forward and I'm sure there'll be minor adjustments to grading. I know the prior plan basically had a series of catch basins within the roadway that would transport everything to the ponds with treatment at the pond at the end. So another change that they included in this submission was the surface drainage. So moving toward the final grading on the edges of the roadway, that'll have to be updated. That's where we get into the comments, getting into two A. So design of ditches and gutters, that two A, I actually made a mistake there. That should be five A at the end, referenced on page sixty three. So that says subdivision shall be so designed that the length of flow or water in the roadside ditches does not exceed four hundred feet. Except as permitted by the planning board runs exceeding the maximum, shall be put in storm sewers or diverted to natural drainage ways. We stated, we don't have any concerns allowing open roadside ditches, provided the updated final design meets the town code for drainage ditches. Essentially having a positive slope. So with this one, again, with the permitting, they're going to have to go through initially, it was a D O H realty subdivision approval. So it'll be the same thing moving forward since you're beyond the sunset period with the five years of approval. So when they go forward with the permitting process with that, as this progresses. If the town is going to eventually take ownership of the roadway, you'll also have to submit a letter that'll be submitted to D O H stating the municipality's willingness to accept maintenance for the roadway and the drainage ditches. So that is something that'll be handled moving forward.
Question just on my end. Does that letter come from the town board or does it come from the highway superintendent usually?
Uh, as long as it's from municipal official. So you would likely need the buy-in from, you know, the town highway. That's going to be actually doing the maintenance on the roadway, but it should be coming from an authorized representative from the town.
Okay.
Yep. And that would be filed with the D O H as part of their process. The next one, two B is the depth and the shape of ditches. Again, this was a preliminary plan. So the final edges of the roadway grading were fully delineated. That'll be handled moving forward as they progress their design to my understanding. So there is a code that basically says you should have a minimum three horizontal to one vertical side slope for the ditches. And I believe that's a standard written just for maintenance and it could be to do with something with mowing or just future maintenance like that, just so you don't get into any steep slopes or something that's going to be a little more difficult to take care of. So again, we don't see any issue with that and that'll be adjusted moving forward and again, submitted to the town for a final review. Two C is something we found in the code that seemed unique, but we wanted to list it so that the planning board has identified. I don't know in the prior approval if there is discussions there, but it references that, you know, storm easement for the drainage right away for the stream crossing lots to encompass the twenty-five-year floodplain. Easement is necessary for stormwater infrastructure if it's outside the right of right away. And all drainage easements for open channels should be a minimum of thirty foot wide. So we wrote a response in there. I understand there's not a town attorney currently and that process is moving forward. In our opinion, on a technical level, I don't see a concern with that, with requiring an easement. So that would be kind of outside of our jurisdiction review is just something we wanted to bring up to the planning board on how you wanted to handle it. Because we do have a, a stream running rate down the property line. I don't know what was done last time, but I'm sure there might be in the future, once the design's done, there could be driveway crossings over it. And that permitting end of it again is going to be jurisdictional potentially with D E C moving forward. So as far as an easement goes to maintain, like I said, thirty foot wide for the twenty-five-year floodplain. On a technical level, I don't see what the concern would be. You know, you have a restriction upgrading at the county road crossing with a thirty-inch culver up above. So I don't know what the protection zone is. So it's just something, like I said, we don't really have a comment on, but just something that the planning board should consider. The rest of the comments again are just some generic design comments. And again, they're going to be progressing their engineering as they move forward. So it's just appropriate signage for the why, the lane. Provide estimated locations for driveways, reach home and accessibility for lots three and four, updated grading plan. Again, just for the stormwater end, because if this is something that the town's going to take ownership of the roadway and in the right way, the drainage improvements, it should be something that the town's going to be comfortable with, just so you get your, you know, final eyes on it. So the clearing plan, erosion control plan, that's all going to be handled moving forward with D C permitting. And one of the other comments is just delineate the wetland areas on the stream crossing on the upper end. On, we just checked the D C environmental resource map for quick. And there is a wetland called out surrounding the stream up there. So it's something likely as this progressive that the D C will want to see anyways. Just ensure that there's no additional permitting needed and that the roadway and grading isn't going to impede on the existing wetland. And then we have our final comment, just roadway designed to reviewed and approved by town highway superintendent and then the fire department. As far as the final plans, just to make sure we're good on emergency vehicular traffic on the cul-de-sac and the overall roadway. Just in case whenever you're doing a design with stormwater, if they have to slightly change the grading or the layout that we're covered on final design. So we didn't really have any concerns with the overall plans.
I know when we met, we discussed. And it sounds like maybe you didn't get a chance to go down to those last two lots where we have the, the pond.
Yes.
Yeah. You were gonna, I thought you were going to comment on that tonight, but.
Not tonight. So our, our understanding after talking with Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, is that this was a preliminary submission, not a final submission with a roadway layout. So at stormwater design hasn't been finalized at this point, correct? And, and that'll be handled moving forward with D C permitting process, if they're going to comply with the general permit for stormwater pollution prevention plan for post-construction control practices, which would involve the ponds. So we left that out of the scope of this review as it wasn't finalized at this point.
Okay.
Yeah.
Will that be something you have to look at again down the road or?
So when they we, we would review it against the town code, but we would stay out of anything jurisdictional to D C, what D C would be reviewing.
Okay.
So you know, if, if the municipality, if you're going to be taking over the road and you're sending in the letter stating your willingness to maintain everything within the right way and drainage ditches. You know, those are the critical items that we'd be reviewing for you as far as the, uh, anything above and beyond that. If it's going to be handled by D C, typically we would stay out of that process unless there was a, a particular concern by the planning board that you wanted us to look into.
Okay. I don't know if it's fortunate or unfortunately, since I've been on the board, this is actually the first project that I've been involved in for all the years I've been on it. We're, you know, looking at the roads and development. There were developments before I came on. So it's kind of new to me.
Yeah.
So everybody else is on it. So going forward at each step of the road, do they, I should ask Karen, do they come in front of the board or we just follow department?
Um, I'm, I'm assuming that what will happen is that that you'll proceed with going to D O H and, and, and D E C. And that once you have their okay, you'll bring us back final plans again. And then we'll review them at that point. And at that point, we'll probably have Cedarwood look at them one more time to see if there are any, anything has changed that might be an issue from any changes having been made. Cause there, you're expecting to end up to have to make some changes, I'm assuming.
So I'm, I'm assuming their final intent as far as roadway and layout, they're going to try to keep as consistent as possible with this preliminary submission, but there might be minor tweaks as they go through their process with permitting with, you know, D C on the final stormwater end. If they have to tweak a few grades or anything like that on the roadway, that would come back to the town. And since this was previously submitted and approved, this is a unique situation where I don't think you would have to go through the whole process as far as sketch plan, everything else. You know, they're doing their due diligence to come to you with a preliminary plan before they progress their full engineering design and put all the time and effort into it. So yeah, that would be my understanding is basically come back with a final submission as they move forward. And you know, D O H, the realty subdivision approval is kind of one of the last steps of the puzzle. So once they get through all these pieces, it would come back to the town for a final, okay. And then close out the permitting process and file the plat, the updated plat.
We did talk to Ron Dual Highway Superintendent and he didn't see any issues. He went and looked at the property. Were you there, Mr. Kierzgard, when he was there? Okay. And he didn't, he didn't really see any issues and he said that he, he wants to review the final plans as well, but he, he doesn't really see an issue with the town taking over the road or the stormwater as long as all the other approvals are in place, but he wants to review it one more time before, before we, before you give your final okay on it. So but you're expecting that anyway, I'm assuming.
John's probably done. We do all ask it.
Um, just another reminder, Eric Samblum from S R A Engineers, representing the applicant. I want to try to make this simple for you if I can. When we first, you know, started working with Adirondack Industries on this and we came up with some ideas on how to improve the, the design for the, for, for them. The one thing that we noticed or what we came up with is that it would require a modify, you know, one variance, if you will, from the subdivision regulations. And that is the grade of the road coming off the intersection. So rather than fully design the entire redesign, the entire subdivision in detail. We wanted to approach the board on that really specific issue. If you can, if you're comfortable proceeding with the roadway design where the slope will exceed three percent, you know, within that hundred and fifty foot zone there. And I presented my justification for that two months ago when I was here, I can, I can do it again for you if you like, but really that's, that's really the, the purpose for right now. And then, you know, as long as we get a sense that that um, technical issue is okay. And I think, I think what we're hearing from Cedarwood and from the highway superintendent that you know, that, that we are, that it is being properly vetted. Then we'll, you know, we'll go away knowing that, you know, that's, that, that piece of it is approved or whatever, that piece of it is, is acceptable. And then we'll go and, and finish the details on the rest of it that are really going to focus a lot more on the stormwater design. Because those are really the other changes that we're doing and, and we're looking really to the D C as the jurisdictional entity there in regards to that. But as John indicated, you know, there may be some tweaks along the way in order to ensure compliance with those regulations, because the regulations have changed since two thousand nine or whatever it was. So you know, there might be some different things that we need to do at this stage. But then, you know, that if we, if we could have that kind of affirmation from the board, then we can comfortably proceed with the final design of the project. And, and then, you know, so we're not asking for any kind of a, you know, grand approval or anything like that. It's really just that, that modification or the variance from the rules. And, and I tried to specify it in the letter that we put in our, our original submittal.
The only problem I have, because we have no lawyer tonight.
Oh.
You know. And I know it's just preliminary thing. But to protect ourselves as a board, I just think that we need to have a lawyer for any kind of a final approval to go forward. I mean, some of us already went on the property, liked what we saw. I mean, I don't see a problem with it, but.
I guess, I mean. You know, I, I don't know how he feels about it or Paul, but or Matt.
Were you, are you planning on doing any work now?
Yeah, I don't think so. Right?
No.
Yeah.
You really can't move forward until you have D E C.
What, what my point is, is I think, you know, if you guys just tell me what you're thinking without making a formal decision, we could feel comfortable moving forward.
Well, I personally walked the whole thing with Steve. Is that your brother? That's what I thought. Your brother. I thought you were the only guy I met. Go ahead. This isn't Steve, I'm going crazy. I, I really liked the, the way it was set up, the land, everything. My only concern was that the pond at the end, but that's, that's going to happen.
That's. I can tell you that it most definitely can get much smaller.
That was pretty deep.
Yes. So I mean, one of our other approaches is, you know, the previous design envisioned just channeling all the stormwater to that one location and treating it there. What we want to do is break it up a little bit, spread out those treatment practices along the way. So that we don't have to, well, and part of it is because we don't want to put everything in pipes, you know, with storm, catch basins and pipes. So we want to remove some of that, open it up. And really in order to make that work, we're going to need to incorporate stormwater treatment practices along the way. So, I mean, it's already been excavated, but you guys are really good at moving dirt.
Is it that their business?
Maybe, maybe, uh, you know, maybe it could become smaller in the future. And I think that's pretty likely that it could.
John, I can't see you.
Oh, yeah.
Would that be something that they would look at, the, the highway department and all that, you know, as far as that?
Oh, for the pond in the back, yes. Yeah. I, I mean, moving forward, like we said, I think what the highway department would be responsible if you took ownership would be the right away items, the drainage items within the right away. I don't know if you'd want to get into taking ownership of the ample stormwater practices.
No, I don't think so.
A big headache, but, but yeah, that would be what would be looked at. And from my understanding, you know, what Eric was saying. I think it'd be relatively correct me if I'm wrong, a low risk for them to move forward into design as the horizontal plan view layout and the vertical profile plan of the roadway was essentially acceptable. I mean, we didn't have technical comments. I know they've contacted the county, there's going to be a county right of way permit that be needed for tying into the intersections. I don't know if you had, had any comments from what you told me for preliminary. So as far as those items go, I don't believe it's a big risk for them to progress their design. And as far as formal approvals go, I mean, that would be handled moving forward. Once you have updated engineering plans. But as far as what they're going to be doing on the stormwater practices, they would be keeping or ownership of that, the HOA or anything moving forward or? Oh, the, the stormwater practices, yeah. Okay.
Unless over on the individual lots.
Okay. Okay. So that would just be something that would be discussed moving forward then on how the applicant would like to handle stormwater practices moving forward, which haven't been fully designed at this stage. So if they're asking to basically get the approval to move forward into the design stage, I see, I personally see it as a low risk. As far as the roadway goes, and the only thing that would shift majorly shift the roadway or if you delineate the wetland and you find out you have to shift it slightly because of grading, but you don't have too many options with the roadway anyways, I think it's a pretty good layout.
Yeah, there's no plan here to change the line lines.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's got to stay within that, that corridor anyway.
Right. Now, I, I.
I think basically what they're looking for is sort of like a preliminary, like you would do normally in a subdivision of preliminary approval.
Like a conditional approval of the preliminary plan, roadway layout.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, is anybody else? So I've, I've walked the whole property. I think it looks, it's going to be fine. I don't see any problems at all. Nice and quiet back there. They, I mean, the road's not completely done, but you can see where the road's going to go and and I saw the pond at the end, but in the change, if you guys look at your maps, see these stripe lines, that's where the road, the road they're going to put is going to tie into this road that's already there. And you saw it, right?
And I've been down there also. And I believe tonight, the only thing they're asking about is the entrance way. That's the only thing they want us to give them permission to move forward with is how is the entrance way? Which?
Yeah, to, to allow us to deviate from the subdivision regulations.
That's all they're asking for is the entrance way, which there is no issue. I was down there today.
Yeah, I think this could be a nice development when it's done.
I do too.
I know Ron looked at it from the perspective of trucks going, town trucks going in and out. And he didn't seem to have too much of an issue with the slope of it either.
Yeah. And once they finalize, like the cul-de-sac layout, how that's going to look, I mean, just get it in front of Ron, make sure he's okay, if they're going to be doing some removal.
Should include the fire department just to make.
Yeah, fire department as well. Yep. Absolutely. That'll be on the final, it's their final tweaks.
Right. Does anybody have a problem with preliminary?
No. No.
So I, I guess I make a motion to preliminary approve what we saw as far as the road uh, extension that you're going to work on. And then you go, going forward, you come back to us anyway, correct?
Yes. Yeah, we've got a few hoops to go through with Department of Health and D C in particular. And then that's going to trigger, you know, a whole nother review of.
I guess that's what I was trying, yeah, trying to say earlier was D C, not, not our highway department. That's what I'm concerned with more than anything.
Yeah.
But from what I saw, I mean, I don't see a problem with that change. And as long as the highway department, now Ronnie, who looked at it, he didn't see a problem either. I, I don't understand why they, when you looked at the site that Steve showed me, why the, where they wanted to put the dirt was. I mean, you put a couple of houses and wear that dirt, how much dirt is going to be?
Yeah. And, and actually, you know, John mentioned, you know, the wetlands that were delineated, they, those were delineated a long time ago. They're going to need to be looked at again, but the, the current design is such a big footprint right there that it actually starts to encroach pretty closely on that stream. We're going to tighten it up and, you know, minimize that.
The other thing to note too, you mentioned for instance, the process moving forward, since there's been a long period of time in preference, you have any issue with this. You're going to have to update the environmental review as well. So with this intercrop that found this with D O H realty subdivision, I understand it'd be a type one action. So that was under the planning board, yeah, it's going to complete, part one. And then the planning board would act as lead agency likely, and then do the coordinated review process that the involved agencies would be D O H, D C and Orange County as well. There might be a few others I'm missing. So that process would start too. So their next submission when they come back, you know, that can progress before really complete final design is done, just to get the ball rolling on that. And then D O H jurisdiction for realty subdivision, it's really the entire subdivision. They're proposing the same for individual wells for each residence. And then individual septic systems, the community system. And then as far as D C's jurisdiction goes, they'll be involved in the permitting process early on, which will be the, I believe there's a D C wetland there on the upper end. Uh, just surrounding the stream a little bit. And then they'll be involved in this stormwater review process with their general prevent, with the stormwater pollution prevention plan, which covers the erosion semi-control during construction and then their post, the plant, the pole items, it could be their pond or whatever they choose for treatment.
Have you already laid out on the plans where you're thinking the septic and the houses are going or you haven't even done that?
We were planning on maintaining the exact spots that Gary Robinson had designed. We, we weren't planning on doing any changes to that at all. However, I can say that John shared with me that he did contact Department of Health to just see what they had as far as records go. And the feedback that was provided is that we might have to redo the test bits and, you know, look at those soils again. So if that's the case, we'll, we'll get back out there with that go. But I don't anticipate changing the design unless they have to because of a rule change or we find that the soils are different than what, you know, Gary had found years ago.
And that's the piece of D O H reviewing those items, that's what we typically stay at a review. So we're not double dipping it unless you have a more strategic.
I'll second John's motion. Are you done with your motion?
Yes.
Okay. I'll second it.
Barbara?
Yes.
Yes. Josh isn't here either.
Yep.
Howard.
Yes.
And John, yes. That's all right.
We'll, we'll get you trained yet, Chris.
So that part's done for tonight. That's all they're looking for tonight, right? Just a couple of questions on the project. They brought up to me that once the houses are built. That, once again, I don't remember two thousand nine as far as being approved and stuff. What's the, what are you going to do as far as the tree line leaving trees up for, you know? Well, I don't know if I talked to you or to.
That's a, that's a good question. To be honest, we, we've been focused on the area within the, the drive.
This has nothing to do with that.
So, yeah. So I mean, as far as the individual lots, I don't know if you have comment on that.
I know it's not in the Adirondack, Adirondack parkings, but since none of the people on this board were there and I vaguely remember, I remember you guys coming to the, they were, that's all I remember.
Are, are you planning on having, when you sell these lots, the individual, the person buying the lot, do the clearing and the building? Or are you going to be doing all of that?
It could be the excavator for the house when we sell or buy it, not we'll just be selling the lot.
Okay. But, but people buying the lots will bring it in whatever design they want for, you're not requiring like a certain square footage of a home or anything like that? Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay. Are, are the deeds already done to the, for the individual lots?
Yeah, because I believe we're paying an accident.
So like, are you good, is there, are there any restrictions for like um, manufactured homes in there or anything? Because the state law has changed where if you, if, if we allow a single family home in any zone, we have to allow
That's a nice house.
Manufactured homes in those same zones. But if you put some kind of a covenant in your deed, restricting that, then I, I'm just curious, have you, have you done any of that? Are you planning to do that?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Cause for issuing permits, I'd be nice to know that on my end, eventually when we get to that point. Is all, I, that's why I was curious.
So you got our pre-approval, I guess, you know.
Great. Great, thank you very much. If there are any other questions or comments that we'll take, that what we'll take into consideration when we proceed with the design. Happy to hear it, Treebuck.
What kind of timeframe are you looking at? Like.
Okay.
Three years.
Uh it's probably availability that.
Yeah.
Um it's uh it's gonna take a little while, I think, to um resolve some of the permit issues that need to be revisited. Hopefully not too extensive. Um I think if it's really, yes, I think satisfying the Department of Health is not gonna be significant, but um if there are new uh triggers due to an environmental review, that I can predict.
Would you just come back to us and we go through the process and hopefully get things done and approved, right?
Right, right. But I mean, ideally, we'll we'll go through the other agencies, we'll have a final design approved by them, and then we'll come back to you with those approved designs so that we wouldn't really expect any other changes after that.
If you wanted to progress the seeker, uh I don't see a big risk in starting that.
And you expect to uh
Yeah.
Wait till like spring or summer to get started or once you get the approvals?
Well, we're ready to proceed. I mean, I think my marketing orders are gonna be to get going. Um so uh so yeah, yeah, we'll we'll get going.
Yeah, we need we need more developments in our town, I think. Bring more people.
Yeah.
Good luck. It's exciting.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're North Country people.
Uh next, we have approval of the minutes from December. Hope everybody got their map to go down.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You too. Careful.
Oh, the lawyer told us that the people don't have to be at the meeting to approve the minute. Okay, so let's say there was four of us here one night and they never showed up at the next meeting, but we still had you know, enough to to have a quorum.
Yeah.
We could still vote on a minute. Is that necessary to have those same people here?
Okay.
Right, so that's good to know.
You didn't have to be present at the meeting to approve the minutes. Correct. Present with you.
Yeah.
Which makes it a lot easier for us.
Yes.
Yes, that's a good rule.
We still be waiting on some of the minutes.
Well, there was a couple. It's like, well, we can't approve the.
Well, we had a backlog of like three months.
I owe you, I owe you a minute.
Yeah.
One, two, I gotta do those for you.
Does anybody have any additions or deletions to the minutes?
I don't think so.
Yeah.
I make a motion when you approve the minutes, December twenty eighth, two thousand twenty two.
Our back.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, next we have all the new business, which uh I know Howard has something he wanted to.
I wasn't at this meeting.
Uh yeah, just just very briefly.
Do you want to pull your mic down towards you?
Thank you. Uh well, thank you, John, for bringing up uh an item that uh I think people uh have a concern with when we look at how new development can work as well as it can. Um you know, we're in the Adirondacks, you know, and I understand that this uh project is not in the Adirondack Park, and yet it is in the town of Lake Luzerne. Um I found an interesting article that I'd like to uh share with my colleagues on the board about uh tree buffers. And I imagine you're all fairly or somewhat more um familiar with this, but I what I found interesting about it is that there are times where a developer will come in and trees have different perceptions to people. A developer may see standing timber, which is worth a lot of money. And a neighborhood association may see that those trees as important to keeping mature trees to build a neighborhood. You know, so um with that thought in mind, I was uh hoping that at some point, at the appropriate time, we could share with anybody who's looking to uh make a development to uh be mindful of the role of what mature trees have in our community. Um I realize that the um that there's a limitation with what the planning board can do with this particular evergreen project. Uh and uh at the same time, these guys seem um quite reasonable and hopefully we'll be able to share with them uh the thinking of people on the board if uh keeping mature trees are important. So um anyway, that's that's all I'm wanting to share with uh with you in uh this brief article on buffer development standards. Uh it's worth taking a look at.
Aaron, just out of curiosity, um is there any rules, regulations about, or is we set our own when it comes to somebody uh want to put a house on a lot as far as the trees or what what we can can or cannot tell them to do?
Nah, there isn't really, not in the zoning. I I would look through the subdivision book though and look and see um like green space kind of thing. If if it's a large subdivision, if there's a certain amount of green space, it has to be left. I just don't know it well enough. I would have to look it up and and read it through, but it would be worth, I mean, you all have the subdivision book.
Right.
To know. What I found when I took over this job, I came from the building code side of things into this job was that to read through these ordinances, at least it triggers in your mind, oh, I saw something about that, and then you can go back and find it. So just make yourself familiar enough with both the subdivision book and the zoning book that, oh, I remember something about that, then you can I because I I do that even now. I do not know it word for word. People coming in, I'm always looking things up, so I again, I would have to look through it, but there may be stuff in there about green space. You know, I know that they in the zoning ordinance, they have like those conservation districts and things like that, so it may be incorporated into that subdivision book.
Thank you.
And I'm sure we can make recommendations.
Yes.
When the development gets going further.
Right.
About you really would. But my only concern was if somebody purchases the lot, what's gonna prevent them from cutting a tree down? If it's not in their deed or the bylaw document or Chris, whatever they do, you know, they could purchase the lot and then cut down all the trees they wanted to.
Chris just brought up the subdivision book and on page fifty, there is a um section that says trees and natural features. And it's reasonable requirements for the preservation of outstanding natural features may be specified. These includes large trees or groves, watercourses and falls, historical spots, exceptional views and similar irreplaceable assets in which there is general public interest. And that's under general planning standards. Again, on page fifty. So there is, I mean, there's at least that much in there. It gives you at least a leadway into being able to say something about it. Instead of bulldozing everything.
Boy, you see in those projects.
Yeah, those projects do exist. And then they plant trees after they've done that, right? Isn't that what they do?
Yeah.
Crazy.
But as far as as far as the this subdivision, um once the lots are sold and somebody is that is that under jurisdiction or that you can just do what they want according to what the plans were already approved?
Unless they put some kind of a deed restriction on.
Okay.
It in the, you know, by the whoever owns it now.
Are you gonna do any kind of like bylaws or anything for the subdivision?
Since you came back in.
You walked back in.
You don't cook the value of the other lots. And you know, of course, I want to get a bunch of that kind of added. But yeah, we're gonna have some.
Well, our question was regarding the trees that, you know, if we wanted so many trees, we recommended to you that we wanted so many trees left on the lots for privacy and aesthetic. Then you've sold the lot. That person could be open to cut down every tree on their lot if you didn't have any restrictions after the fact.
I would say just make that a mandate for the approval. You want what trees could stay. But I don't know how it would work.
Okay.
Could I ask you a question? And I appreciate you bringing that up. I don't know if the question I'm asking you is even a reasonable question or or not, but I'll ask it anyway. Um is it something that you'd consider, even though knowing, you know, this was passed a long time ago? Uh for example, for you to require a uh twelve foot or ten foot buffer of mature trees between the roadside shoulder into the property, into the property to remain while allowing a ten foot wide driveway. But you know, I know that may be more specific. I don't expect an answer, but might that be something that you may consider?
If it was possible, I could, but some of it, like the cuts go into the back lot. The way they designed it before, it was so steep that you would lose a lot of the trees on on the front lot, on the front of the lots. Um on the ones on the entrance and when it would be possible. So every lot is different and and where they're gonna place their house and what configuration.
Um the other issue might be with the stormwater drains doing the ditches. You might have to take down some of the trees closest to the road for that.
Right.
It happens, wow, sixty foot ride or what, or they would all.
Yeah.
It would probably all.
I'll be in that. Okay.
And then you have their wells and then you have their septic that, you know, be it's just something to consider.
Because I think uh what's the small slide, I believe, is like a little over one point two acres, I believe.
Which is a good size of lot.
Separation from the septic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. I want to give you a copy of this over here, you know, before you leave. Thanks.
There was a question that was asked after you left and you came back, so there you go.
It it's just something to consider. We can't like, I don't think we can actually enforce anything, correct? Karen?
If you put it in as a condition of the subdivision approval.
But I thought it was already approved back in two thousand nine.
Well, they're they're coming back. It's yeah, that's something we have to discuss with the lawyer because it's already been approved. There weren't any conditions that I can see that I have found on the approval from before. So basically, they're changing the road pitch and they want to change the stormwater um drainage. Uh so I think the rest of the approval has to stay as it was, but you can be thinking about this for future subdivisions because I know that we've got two coming down the road here. We've got one to John Reed and we've got that one up on up in the heights that they already came in for a pre-preliminary approval on. Those are two that I know of now, whether there's more.
And they both came before us already for
right thoughts. On a preliminary, they did like a sketch plan type thing.
So this isn't gonna stop you guys from doing what you need to do, because I I want to see that subdivision. I I think it's gonna be really good, but um and there was nothing like Karen said, nothing we can find as far as any restrictions. But it's just a suggestion from the planning board. You know? And if you can't do it, you can't do it. Unless you put it in the deed.
Similar and current off the nine iron mill. We got those roads weren't dedicated to the town.
Right.
Right.
And we left the we left a lot of trees in there and I look beautiful. Your Ross Creek, the one through it.
Yeah. I liked the way you guys, what, did you build your mother's house? Well, you that's.
Yeah, G C.
It's a beautiful house from the outside. Looks nice.
Yeah, so you saw that.
Right. That's right in there. It looks great.
We want kind of one in there.
Yeah.
We'll see. I have to take a look.
Is that it?
The only other thing I have to bring up is it was pointed out to me on the agenda sheet, I had the date as twenty twenty two, so if you want to just write in twenty twenty three, make that correction. That's all I had. Must be Chris made that mistake.
Yeah, let's play with our Chris. Does anybody else have any uh business they want to talk?
No.
So I I know you guys want to stay out more because it's the weather's so nice. I make a push. We enjoy in the meeting.
Second.
All favor.
I.
Uh can I make uh, this is.